Hey, everyone. We'll start in two minutes, okay?
Okay.
I'm off camera, but I'm here. Selena, it's Luke.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, guys. Let me see. Look at the here, you Daniel, I see you, Valerie as well. And Jared did notify me that he was gonna run a little bit behind. Right now, he is in an API program. Okay, so give me one second, everyone. Okay. Alright, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May sixth, and this is Agenda for Legislative Meeting of the Mayor and Council for the City of Mount Rainier. Valerie, can you go ahead and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And I didn't inform Morocco, but let me do it formally now. Luke Chesek? Luke?
I'm here.
Valerie Woodall?
I'm here.
Daniel Carr?
Here.
And Jared is gonna be joining us soon. Alright, perfect. So we have quorum. We're gonna move on to item number two, review of the agenda. Valerie, could you go ahead and read through the agenda, please?
Yep. The agenda of the Legislative Meeting of the Mayor and City Council in the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland on Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty five at seven P M. One, call to order, we just did that. Two, review of the agenda. The mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, mayor and council member event announcements. Number four, presentation and discussion on Greenwell Consulting Group End of Legislative Session Report, twenty minutes. The mayor and council will receive a presentation from Mr. Lanyard and his team on the end of legislative, I'm sorry, end of legislative session report. Number five, presentation and discussion on building application for forty five oh five thirtieth Street, Mount Rainier, Maryland, two oh seven one two, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have a presentation from the owner of forty five oh five thirtieth Street, Mount Rainier, Maryland, two oh seven one two. Discussion on Teacher Appreciation Week, five hundred dollars each for each, for Mount Rainier Elementary School and Thomas S. Stone Elementary School totaling one thousand dollars, five minutes. The mayor and council will have a discussion on the funding for teacher appreciation from line five 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 zero totaling one thousand for Mount Rainier Elementary School and Thomas Stone Elementary School. Number seven, public comment. Please see page four of the agenda where the rules for public comment are listed. If you wish to speak, please advise during the virtual meeting. Old business, number eight, second reading and adoption of resolution number oh one twenty twenty five, establishment of the Mount Rainier Community Guarding Committee, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have the second reading and adopt resolution number oh one twenty twenty five, establishment of the Mount Rainier Community Guarding Committee. New business, number nine, first reading of ordinance number zero three twenty twenty five, budget amendment number two, fifteen minutes. The mayor and council will have the first reading of the ordinance number oh three twenty twenty five, budget amendment number two. Number ten, first reading of resolution number two dash twenty twenty five, proclaiming April as Arab American Heritage Month, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have the first reason, reading of resolution number zero two twenty twenty five, proclaiming April as Arab American Heritage Month. Number eleven, vote on approval of minutes, five minutes. The mayor and council will vote on approving the following minutes, March eighteen twenty twenty five work session, March twenty two, twenty two twenty twenty five, public hearing and work session for proposed F Y twenty six budget. April one legislative meeting, the budget legislative meeting for proposed F Y twenty six budget. April eighth twenty twenty five, public hearing and work session for the F Y twenty six budget. Number twelve, presentation of minutes, five minutes. The city clerk will present the April fifteenth work session and budget legislative meeting for proposed F Y twenty twenty six budget to the mayor and council. And number thirteen, adjournment.
Thank you so much, Valerie. Is there anything you guys wish to delete from this agenda? Nope? We're good? Alright. Okay, so before we move to item number three, I wanna make sure to wish everybody a happy A P I month as well as Jewish American Heritage Month. Both months have been proclaimed, one of them back in twenty twenty three. And information is gonna be going out. Usually, we try to do it after our first meeting, and this is the first meeting of the month, in order to to highlight the various proclamations and resolutions that gone out. Okay, so thank you guys so much. So that information is gonna be coming out officially, usually after the meeting. So if not today, by tomorrow. Okay? Alright, so just also please note that council member Jared Soffis is also with us. Okay, so we have a full, a full quorum. Thank you guys so much. So we're moving on to item number three, Mayor and Council Member Events and Announcements. Valerie, I'm gonna start with you. Go ahead.
The Mount Rainier Elementary School P T O is hosting its community carnival on Friday, May ninth. And this is an event open to the entire community, so just FYI and that. And then for me, for the Recreation Committee, we have June seventh is the Pride Parade. I'm going from Thomas Stone to the Gateway Farmers Market. And the Gateway Open Studios Tour is happening on May tenth. Sorry, out of order, but yes.
Eleven o'clock or ten o'clock, Valerie, for Gateway Studios, Open Studios?
I think it's, uh, let me check.
It's on the agenda, so I'll read it then. Don't worry about it.
Alright, thanks.
But thank you so much, Valerie. Jared?
Nothing, yeah, I'm here, sorry. Nothing to, uh, nothing to report.
Thank you so much. And I did inform the community you're gonna be running a little bit behind, since you are representing us in an A P I event. So they have been informed of that. Thank you for that as well then. Okay?
Thank you.
Perfect. Alright, Daniel, Luke? You're mute, Daniel? Daniel, you're mute.
Sorry, I thought I muted myself. The CERT meeting this month will be on Monday, May nineteenth, at seven thirty P M in the Police Station Community Room. If you're interested in getting involved or volunteering to help the community, I would ask that you consider coming to a meeting and seeing what CERT is all about. Also, Selena, I want to congratulate you on your bid for reelection. Sincerely, congratulations. I also want to congratulate Jenny and Joseph. I know Joe's here. I don't know if Jenny is. But I also want to congratulate Charnette, Derek, and Tony as well. This was one of, if not the most positive campaigns I have ever witnessed or been a part of. And I've been doing campaigns since the mid nineteen eighties when mudslinging was expected. Watching this council, watching the council candidates having real conversations with each other while campaigning and not a single negative word spoken about or against each other was amazing. You could honestly feel the respect each of them have for one another, and I feel so honored to have been a part of it. I feel confident that all of the candidates who did not win their bids will stay engaged in the city in one capacity or another. And for that, the benefit of the city will be had. Thank you. And again, Selena, congratulations.
Thank you. Luke? Chesek? You're muted, Luke, if you're speaking.
Alright, I'm talking now. Can y'all hear me?
We could hear you now. Go ahead.
Alright, thanks so much. Just wanted to say, just a few words. You just wanted to say thank you to staff. This is my last city council meeting, except for the swearing in on, on, on Monday, I think, of new council members. And it's been eight years, and it's been a really great eight years. A lot has changed. Some stuff has stayed the same. But I really wanna just congratulate everybody who won in the election. I wanna congratulate everybody who ran in the election. It's no easy thing to raise your hand and knock on doors and talk to your neighbors and put yourself out there. And to everyone who ran, just wanna say thank you for doing that. I think it's good and healthy for a city to have dialogue. And you can only do that if there are multiple candidates in any race. So I just appreciate everyone for running. And I am gonna miss working with people to get stuff done. That has been kind of the joy of the last few, few years, these last eight years for me. But I think that we're gonna have a good council in place. I know that we have really quality staff in place that are smart and hardworking. And I just wanna say thank you to staff for all your work, all your support of elected officials. Be talking is making your life harder because now you have to stay here later because I'm talking so much. So I just wanna say from the bottom of my heart, thank you to staff for all your great work on behalf of residents of Mount Rainier. And now I will stop talking. Thank you, Selena.
Thank you, Luke. Yeah, I wouldn't wanna interrupt you. I was gonna say you still have a thirty minute meeting before the swearing in where you get to like say your peace and your love and everything. So what you just said, put it all together, and we'll hear it again Monday. Because I wanna make sure I give you and Jared the floor for you guys to say, you know, your last comments as official council members. And I think that usually we give you guys that honor on that special day, you know, to spread your love and your wisdom, you know, upon the new council, right? I think me and you have been together at this for eight years, Jared, for a little bit less. But it feels like we all have been together at this since like day one because even if people were not part of the council, we definitely were working and collaborating many projects together. So it's been outstanding. So Luke, take two is gonna also be on Monday. So we're gonna be showing up a little bit before the swearing in official. So that way, you guys will have any additional words to say. Jared's like, I saw your message, Jared, as well. I saw you popping. It's like, I'm not leaving yet. You're still stuck with us for seven more days. You're still stuck with me for seven more days, Luke, or six and a half.
I just can't, yeah, I can't wait to talk more. It'll be great.
Okay, thank you so much. Jared's like, can I do a take two? Alright, perfect. Thank you guys so much. So I'll say a couple of words. The first, I wanna read the announcements. Melly, can you put it all the way to the bottom, please? Okay, there you go. We have the Mount Rainier Elementary School Community Carnival. This will be May, Friday, May ninth, from five to eight. Gateway Open Studios is the Saturday, May tenth, from noon to five P M. Mount Rainier Day will be Saturday, May twenty first, from eleven A M to four P M at the Nature Center. The swearing in of the new council president and mayor will be, we need to edit that one, Melly, mayor will be on Monday, May twelfth, seven P M at Police Department Community Room. The Creation Committee Pride Day, Valerie already said this, but Saturday, the seventh, from ten to twelve, from Thomas Stone to Gateway Farmers Market. Alright, did I miss any other event that we can think of? I think we have kind of called, Open Studio has their banner. It's actually right now in the circle, so is there along with our Mount Rainier Day. Mr. Kamali authorized for us to be able to put the banner up in order to inform the community of this event. We are, we do our partners with Gateway C D C and the multiple things. Valerie is our representative for Gateway. So thank you so much, Mr. Kamali, for making sure, like, you know, the banner was up as soon as possible. We did tell him that after election was gonna be going up. Other than that, let me start with, with the Board of Election. Thank you, Board of Election, for running another very, very professional, you know, election. I think also that for one time, our Rainier team is up to the par as well. I definitely feel that, I feel sorry, very bad for Mr. Kamali, Melissa, and Jared that were there past midnight. So even after all the candidates left, they had to be there to make sure they put the documents together and submit and getting ready to be put out. So Melissa, Jared, I know you guys are here. Thank you guys so much for us, ladies, you stood, Mr. Kamali as well, cuz you're there making sure that the team is doing what they need to be doing. So that's very appreciated, along with the officers that were in and out and our, our Public Works team. Alright, other than that, to everybody that ran, congratulations for putting yourself out there. It was a long and short campaign. As always, we got to talk to a lot of people and hear their voices heard. I think it's important for those candidates as well, a lovely suggestion to also, you know, continue getting involved. You know, I think that all of us need more people in our committees and working and volunteer for the city so you have, you have even a better understanding of the city. But also, you know, as more elections come, you know, seats are always open, right? But in saying of that, thank you guys for being out there. It was a long day yesterday. The weather held back. But I think everybody was willing to talk to residents, to our community. Thank you for showing up. The weather went from windy to sunny to rain. I mean, you couldn't know what to say. And it was, it was, it was a beautiful day overall, you know. So we're very happy, and I think that everybody was looking out for each other for a minute there. There was bad wind, and I'm sorry, I'm having bad allergy. I got flowers sent to me, and I love flowers, but I'm allergic to them. So the winds are blowing, you know, the tents out, and everybody came like joined together to try to protect everybody's tents. So that was very nice, you know, and it showed like it didn't matter what, who was running against who. Like, you know, everybody basically like made sure that nobody was hurt cuz if those tents would have flown away, they could potentially will have hurt someone. So saying that, you know, it was great, right? So thank you, community, for coming out. Thank you, Board of Election. Thank you, staff. Thank you to everybody that ran. It's very appreciated. And I look forward to working with a new team. If I could have like Jared and Luke added to the council, I will, you know. I put fine print to add them as like, you know, additional support. But I know that no matter what, they're always gonna be here supporting and helping. So thank you to everybody that ran, to everybody that was supportive. I know everybody had campaign teams. So for all the candidates, you know, and their campaign staff and, you know, that went out there and did a lot of volunteer hours and work. You know, the express thank you is from behalf of the whole entire city for putting yourself out there along with the different candidates and making sure you, you support, you support us well. And I was happy to also see friends to see, got a vote for Mayor Saseen, which was, I did let him know. And he was very happy to, he was very happy. He thought it was funny that that happened. But I told Fred, like, maybe you need to come back more often, you know, we missed you. But so overall, thank you so much, and thank you, Daniel, for your congratulations. And congratulations on running a campaign as well. Okay, so I love you all, but I also feel like the staff looking at me like, we stood until one o'clock in the morning, mayor? We need to like, we were up, we were up at, at, at the city at nine o'clock sharp, so you need to get moving. Alright, so moving on to item number four, presentation. And, and the other thing, I'll make sure my thank yous will be said, not today. But when I do my, you know, on Monday, how do you call it, additional thank you to, to my team. I already posted it on my social media, but they'll also be say on Monday. So I also will be doing take two, Jared, I promise. Alright? Okay, so moving on to item number four, Presentation and Discussion on Greenwill Consulting Group End of Legislative Session Report. The Mayor Council received a presentation, and it says Ivan. I'm not sure if Ivan's here, but Ivan is like wonderful as well. But we do have Jonathan Carpenter and Ms. Leslie Felix, both of them who are out there at all levels fighting for and advocating for what we need in the city. And I think we have built a beautiful relationship between all of us when it comes to not just like, you know, funding, but legislation and making sure the voices of Mount Rainier are heard. And definitely legislators know where we stand very clearly on things. There's no, there's no misunderstanding or we think Mount Rainier feels this way. They definitely know where Mount Rainier stands and feels about many things, which is good, and you know, how supportive we all are. Alright, so I'm gonna open up the floor to Jonathan or Leslie, whoever's gonna go first. Jonathan, I see your mic open. So I'm gonna seat the floor to you, followed by, by Leslie as well. Go ahead.
You very much, Melo, Jonathan Carpenter, and Leslie here for Greenwill Consulting. First of all, I just wanna say again, I always emphasize this, we don't take it for granted, this relationship and the opportunity to work for you in Annapolis and be your eyes and ears. Again, for us, it is indeed a pleasure. I mean that sincerely because you guys are very active and it makes a difference in Annapolis. The mayor coming down and being a part of committees and being, giving testimony. Councilwoman Carter coming down, we really appreciate it. It makes a difference when they know that you guys are also participating. So we really, it really makes us effective. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the, the budget. As we know, it was, this was, this was anticipated as of December twenty twenty four last year. They were contemplating going into session with a budget shortfall and a big structural deficit. It was estimated at three hundred and ninety-six million for fiscal twenty-five and two point nine five billion for fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven. And it was projected to grow by six billion by twenty thirty. So that's what the legislature was faced with this year. And again, we knew it. We knew it was pretty bad. They've been, as I like to say, putting a Band-Aid on something that needed to be corrected. So they're mandated to balance the budget. It did take up the entirety of the session. In fact, we thought we were gonna go into special session. And I'll talk a little bit, little more about that because it still may come. But so by the end of the session, through some tax increases and some other measures, they were able to balance the budget. The budget did pass. It was a three hundred and fifty million dollar budget for F Y twenty-six. The things that were, things that were done in a budget to, to help the budget, the K-12 funding is a major piece. I think everybody needs to pay attention to Maryland and the fact that Maryland puts that as a number one priority. The problem is that it's creating an unfunded mandate on our, our counties, the funding that's required. And so we've gotta keep a big eye on that because the governor, in fact, had cut, I think it was close to five hundred million from that budget, and the legislature restored it, saying, hey, this is our priority. So it was a major debate during the session. But again, it was restored. But again, things that they did to balance the budget and the new numbers that came out with, now you're looking at a deficit of three hundred and fifteen million in F Y twenty-six. They put two point one billion in the rainy day fund. So again, things that really make a difference. And now, we were talking about a budget shortfall that was expected in F Y twenty, by F Y twenty-six. Instead of that two point nine billion, it's now expected to be a hundred and fifty-five million. That was major work that they did. Also, we said it would grow by six billion by twenty thirty. It's now expected to be around three billion. So they slashed it in half. So they did major work at the legislature this year. And again, I think a lot of that had to do with the governor and, and him saying that we were gonna stay in special session and extended session until we got it done. And so the legislators responded. In terms of what we did, again, it was a lot of activism, a lot of legislation. I'll let Leslie talk about the great meeting we had with Secretary Day recently, talking about some funding for Potts Hall. I know that's been a major issue, and we've been working on it as a priority. So we do have some, hopefully, some great news in the, in the future coming our way and in terms of grants and opportunity. So I'll let Leslie talk a little bit about the legislative pieces that we've done and this great session we had. But again, thank you for everything that you did in your activism down in Annapolis.
Thank you so much. Leslie, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Benitez. Good evening, council members as well. I, I wanted to highlight a few of the initiatives that we worked on this session for Mount Rainier. But I'll, I'll start with Potts Hall. As you know, this has been a critical project we've been working on for quite some time. And we started the session still hopeful, at least wanting to have the conversation with the legislators to see if it was a possibility. We, we had quite a few conversations with them as well. But we did at some point realize that this was not something that we saw being supported with the fiscal constraints we were seeing. So that's when we decided we have to reroute, find another way to be able to support this project. So that's what led to a meeting with Secretary Jake Day over at the Department of Housing and Community Development. It was quite a positive conversation. We did discuss a few programs and funding opportunities that are coming up. And we do think there is a, a strong pathway moving forward. So we are working very quickly with Mr. Kamali and Mayor Benitez to make sure we have the information so that we can take advantage of these opportunities. So that is where we are at right now with that. We continue to put our efforts towards it. And as I mentioned, there is an opportunity, but we just have to make sure now that we do our part and have the information in place. So I do want to take, to thank Mayor Benitez and Mr. Kamali because they do provide us the information quickly and respond to our emails. And that's been very important, especially with, with Potts Hall. So we'll keep you posted on how those conversations go moving forward. We also did work on quite a few legislative matters. One was House Bill three seventy-two. This is regarding the Prince George's Gateway Development Authority. So as you're aware, this is, it's a great opportunity because Mount Rainier has two seats on the board. So it does give you a strong voice. And there's also funding that has officially been allocated, including an additional five hundred thousand this year. So this is bringing additional funding to help support projects, including in Mount Rainier, to help support revitalization. So definitely something to keep monitoring and make sure that you're involved in to make sure that those projects you think that could help the area as a whole are supported. We also supported House Bill three four three. This was a priority for Mount Rainier, which would allow for certified, trained technicians to look through the stop sign, not the stop sign, the speed and stop sign, those type of violations. Being able to take that away from the police officers so they can focus on more priorities that are going on in the city was very important. So we worked with Mayor Benitez to make sure we were submitting testimony in time. We were at the hearings and working closely with M M L, who was spearheading this. So we are happy that this also did pass and is moving forward. There were quite a few bills we had to oppose this session. We saw quite a few controversial bills, bills that were going to impact the autonomy of the city, also just things related to tax and other types of deadlines. So it was very important to be on top of legislation, making sure we notified you in a timely manner because they were definitely looking to slip some things through the cracks. So again, we, we appreciate that you all always respond quickly. That makes a big difference in how effective we can be in Annapolis. That was, those were the main things in regards to the city. I did also provide in the agenda packet a list of the bills that have been signed thus far that could impact you all. So that's on the second page. The governor had a bill signing today. He has two more going on this month. So we are tracking those. You never know when something's going to be vetoed. So definitely still got some work to do this, these next couple of weeks. And I'll, I'll end with just two key dates that are coming up. July first, that's when the budget is going to be in effect. So those, um, tax revisions that Jonathan mentioned, we definitely are keeping an eye on and making sure we meet with, um, people like the Comptroller's Office. Because we want to understand how these, uh, tech taxes and other implications they may have on the city. And we also are keeping an eye on the August deadline for state agencies to submit their budget request to the governor. Although it may seem far away, it can come really quickly. So we, especially with the conversations we're having with the HCD, we want to make sure we keep that in mind. Um, so just wanted to put those two things on your radar, but I will stop there and let Jonathan, um, wrap things up.
Thanks, Julie. So, um, there's one thing in particular that's been very concerning from the business community. Um, that three percent IT tax that was passed, um, there's a lot of questions still out there, right, Mr. Kamali? Is he shaking your head? So we're keeping an eye on that because how will that affect the municipalities also, right? Everybody uses IT services. So, uh, we've been getting questions and so we've been working with, uh, we'll, we'll be working with MML and others to work with the Comptroller's Office to see how this tax will be rolled out. Um, there are so many different, I guess, scenarios, um, in the implementation. So we will be keeping an eye on that. And at some point, hopefully we can get a presentation, uh, by one of the staff members to come over and talk about, um, this is, is rolled out. So it's very important. The other thing I'd like to, to emphasize and, you know, the ninety day report that we do, uh, again, Leslie did a magnificent job with it. Uh, I guess one of our strengths is really our communication as you get, uh, reports during the session and in the session report. And that's just for your education, identification of what's going on. So again, always strongly, uh, uh, ask you to look at those reports and, and see what's going on. Because that's how we communicate more effectively. But again, thank you so much for the opportunity to work with you.
Hey, thank you so much, Jonathan and Leslie, uh, for keeping us informed. I'm going to open up the floor to the council to see if they have any questions or feedback. But, um, definitely I couldn't do what I do without you guys being there advocating for us every step of the way. And it works that I'm only a call away and a thirty minute drive if need be, right? But, um, it definitely has helped to make sure that, um, we go through the ninety days together from day one all the way to the end. And, and at the end, definitely it's a lot of, um, unknown. So late nights, early mornings, basically you have to be, um, observing all those documents twenty four hours. So, um, it's a lot of work. So we're happy to see you guys here. And just to also let people know that their work doesn't stops once a session is done. It's year round. And advocating for us, putting stuff up front and for the new council, um, be ready because in June we are doing our priority list. Um, and usually, uh, that's something that, uh, Luke helped us put together long, long, long eight years ago. Where we all come up with three priorities and then we figure out, um, one matches. Um, and then also Mr. Kamali works with, with the team and I also like, you know, work with them as well, with Mr. Kamali. Um, to figure out if there's something like when it comes to making, um, our life more productive or better. You know, one of the things that we had asked was a technician for PD, right? Because we realized that was needed and we pushed, um, last year until it happened this year. So sometimes the bills take more than one round to pass. So we definitely want to say thank you to make sure that the priorities are put through. And we'll be having them in June. We'll like, um, organize and package them together so that we could basically give you, um, lovely marching orders for you guys to spend the summer advocating to figure out who's going to create those bills, if they're on or not. I also will be sending this information because, uh, the MML, our eyes are due May thirty. I just got noticed. So that we want to put something through MML. Um, we need to get through it, um, as soon as possible. If it's something that we want to flag that did not pass this year, that we want to see it for this upcoming year be important. Okay? So, um, Jared, I'm going to go with you first. Go ahead.
Yep. Um, Leslie, I think you guys know this is my last, uh, council meeting, um, on, well, last council meeting as a council member. So I just want to thank, uh, if I have any questions, I'll save those for current and up and, um, upcoming council. But I just wanted to thank everyone for, uh, the work they've done in support of the city, uh, and protecting our city, um, advancing our priorities, helping to get us resources and so on. So.
Thank you. Luke?
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Leslie, um, for all your work you do on behalf of the city. I have a couple of questions. Um, as, as you're looking at future budgets, is there any, any, any discussion of the, the governor's office getting creative when it comes to taxing authorities? Whether that's giving municipalities more authority over taxing or whether that's the state thinking about things like a carbon tax? Or, um, I know some, some democratic circles have talked about, you know, attacks on, on big companies like Google or Amazon, depending on how much they're able or it's really more Google, Facebook, Amazon, how much they're able to kind of sell advertising and, and taxing by the amount of, um, uh, sort of people they can, they, they market to advertisers as the, as, as the sort of market that's out there for them to sell. Is there any, any discussion about getting creative on the taxation side of the equation? Or giving local authorities, the municipalities or county more flexibility when it comes to taxation?
Go ahead, guys.
Say, uh, uh, Luke, it, it did come up in discussions. I know the Googles of the world, when they were talking about this IT tax. Um, because, uh, a lot of the big lobbyists for the Googles of the world started coming from different states and, uh, still converging on Annapolis. Um, so there's definitely discussions. Um, again, the legislators got it, the, the legislative body has got to be creative. Um, because, um, they've got to do things differently. They've got to find revenue. Uh, we didn't speak on this and probably should have, still don't know the, uh, the totality of what's going to happen at the federal level. Um, so the, the state is still bracing itself for what can happen. As we know, things happen daily. Um, so they are having discussions and, and being creative at the local level. Again, discussions with MML, MML and others about, hey, what kind of flexibility can be extended? So, um, those discussions are happening. Yes, for sure.
Okay. Cause I know from a city perspective, it's been very helpful to have the vacant property tax. Um, but we're sort of capped at what we can charge there. So any ability to kind of, kind of go up, I think would be, would be helpful. Um, and there's also added flexibilities for, for tax credits, like for seniors or folks who have lived here for a long time. So. Um, yeah, be interesting to know, uh, what flexibilities we can get there. Thanks.
So Luke, uh, to add to Bill, there was a bill that was submitted to try to see some of the like fees were increased from a thousand to five thousand dollars. And that's something that I were looking into because some of the things were capped as a city to do. So that's something that we could also, um, checking revisit, um, as we could put like information through. But that was one of the things that definitely we, we were working on. So, yeah, but it, it's been a challenge because that much taxing, people are feeling like overwhelmed. Okay. Thank you for your questions. Uh, Danielle, then Valerie?
Thank you. Um, I have a comment and then a question piggybacking off the, uh, three percent IT tax. Um, I'm, I'm in the gamer community and, uh, there's a lot of gamers here in Maryland. I think you may know where I'm going. Uh, they're afraid of losing Bethesda over in, uh, Rockville. And, uh, that would, we would lose a huge industry, I mean, to Texas who already has two of their divisions there. So I'm, I'm paying close attention to that too. Um, my question is, you were talking about Pots Hall, talking to Jake Day. Do we have an idea ballpark of what we're looking at or is it just open for, you know, we'll take whatever we can get?
We, we don't have an exact number. Um, again, these are awards that are made through that office. Um, as, as we put in the application, we'll have those conversations and see what type of numbers start to come out based off of what projections we, we give him. Um, so, uh, we'll definitely keep you, uh, in the, in the know as we go through the process.
So the number could be any number. It could be a high number.
But they have limits, right? They, they will have limits. So.
Okay. I was just curious because I was hoping, you know, I'm hoping to see big numbers. Thank you.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Valerie?
Um, thank you. Um, and, uh, thank you for all your work in Annapolis. I know it's much appreciated by the city council and, and mayor. Um, and, uh, uh, citizens. Um, my, I guess my question is the Gateway Development Authority. I think you mentioned Leslie that it's five hundred thousand, um, that's coming to us, uh, or to the Gateway Development Authority. Can you speak a little bit about what that funding will support? Um, is it capital projects, kind of support operating, um, and things like that? Thank you.
Um, so in, in total, they, I believe have a million for, allocated for capital projects. Um, and this was over the course of the three years. Um, they have five categories that they're supposed to focus on. It, it's, um, transportation, improving the quality of life for residents, neighborhoods, economic development. Um, and I always forget that last one, but, um, it, it has to go around, um, those categories. So it is pretty open. I think they're still working on, on what the criteria will be, but, um, I definitely would recommend you all start thinking about what those projects would look like for you all. Because the funding is, is now there.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Just to emphasize that I'm something, this is not, uh, all the money for Mount Rainier is actually, uh, between, uh, six cities, correct? Six or seven, I always forget. But, uh, it's Bramwood and Bramwood, Mount Rainier, those are the one and blue ones. Uh, Cottage City, Calmer Matter, um, Blenheimburg, I think that's, I got all of them. But yeah, so I just want to make sure that is clear. So that's the bill that actually, um, originated here in Mount Rainier. And we work with, uh, Senator Augustine in order to be able to create it. And, um, last year, the first year, you know, was created, um, last year, some funding was put into it. We work also on repealing the sunset and, and actually advocating for more money. So it's still in the construction phase. So, um, that's where we're at. Uh, Valerie is actually like, um, my backup seat in that organization. I, I sit as like, you know, as the, one of the members, all the mayors do. Um, but, um, in saying that, how do you call it, like, um, it's something we're going to be looking into because there's deadlines right now. Um, we have been building from the ground up. Um, so Leslie, thank you as well for, for the support, um, that was given there as well. Mr. Hopkins as well, right? And the various consultants that helped us get there. But it's been like, um, a labor of love and nonstop work to get everything together. So can I get two more minutes on the clock? Um, well, I don't, let me have four minutes on the clock. Well, not me, as I'm acting as council, you can put two, uh, four minutes on the clock, please. Okay.
Second.
Probably move a second in discussion, objection, extension, hearing, none. All right. So as for me, uh, Leslie and Jonathan, as aside from giving you guys instructions in June and what we want to look into. I'll follow up with Mr. Kamali when it comes to the other, uh, letters, information, but in follow-up meetings when it comes to, um, Pots Hall, right? Um, and if anything that we see for, um, for on it, it might end up being like, you know, the tax, uh, the tax increases. We could put up to, I think, five different ones for the L R Is in order to see if we could get that support also from the bigger body, um, with my, with, um, MML. Okay. Uh, other than that, it's always a pleasure to collaborate with you guys. Um, and all the different bills, I know that the new council members are also, um, people that, um, I know Lisa Joseph for experience, you know, he, um, he works heavily also when it comes to legislation. So that'll be a good asset, um, to have in the team as well. All right. So in saying all of that, um, I don't see no comments on the, I see no comments on the chat. Do you see any comments on Facebook? Jared with a D. Thank you so much. So Jonathan and Leslie, thank you so much. Again, we were not going to keep you any later because I know you guys do a lot of work for us. And those late hours and early mornings are no joke and all the additional commuting to get us, uh, where we need to be. So thank you guys again. Please also extend our great thank you to Ivan because he's definitely wonderful, um, in having collaborate together. All right. Thank you so much. Bye. All right, Meli. Can I have the agenda? There you go. We're going to be moving on to item number five. Presentation and discussion on building applications for forty five oh five thirtieth street, Mount Rainier, Maryland, two oh seven one two. The Marion Council will have a presentation from the owners of forty five oh five thirty street, Mount Rainier. So if I am correct, we have, uh, let me see, I do see you. We have Director Alma Farofino in the, in the line with us. Um, Alma, give us a little bit of feedback, information. And let us know who is here to speak on behalf of the property too, please.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council, um, City Manager and Residents. Thank you for having us here one more time. Um, we are here to do a presentation on property forty five oh five, um, thirtieth street. I know for a fact that we have here, Mr. Jeffrey Watson. He's actually the contractor working on the property, um, on this project. Uh, Mr. Watson, um, the floor is yours.
Before that, Alma, just one thing, is there any variance or anything we need to know and have the permits been approved already by the county?
No, Mayor, there are no variances and this is, it has been approved by the county. Yes, fully.
All right, perfect. I just want to make sure we forward the information forward that we know. Uh, Mr. Watson, thank you so much for being here, uh, today.
Thank you.
And, and if you could tell us a little bit of what, um, is going to be done to the property? And ideally, if there's a timeframe, when the work is going to start and when you guys are aiming at ending.
Okay, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me? Okay, good, good evening to you all. Okay, my name is Jeffrey Watson. I'm the CEO of Quality Showings Home Improvement Company. I've been in the business over thirty years, originated from Brandywine, Maryland. Um, I'm licensed in, uh, Maryland, license number eight six seven two seven in DC five three zero zero five four four nine. Um, I'm also a builder for the, uh, the federal government, builder ID number oh three five four. I do ADA compliant work for them. And this is what I'm doing for Mr. Battle, an ADA compliant job. Okay, I'm not going to, I'm going to cut that short and I'm going to get to the building. Okay? We got our permit, um, I, and, and, uh, we have the electrical permit, the plumbing permit posted. We have the drawings posted. Everything is posted over there. Okay? Um, what we did, we start the footing foundation. The footers are twenty four inches by twenty four inches wide, thirty inches deep. That's below freezing level. Once we dug the footings, we called for footing inspection and here is the footing inspection sticker. He bet it went off. Hello, I'm sorry.
We, we could see and hear you. We, we saw the inspection document showing us, yes.
Okay. Here's, uh, the inspection sticker where it passed. Okay. So we went on to our next phase. If you look at the drawings, the drawings calls for six by six footers. Uh, we have six, six by six footers, eight feet tall. I usually order six by six by tens. We insert the six by six footers out the hole, fourteen inches high. So when you pour the concrete down in the hole, uh, the concrete goes up underneath of it and around it. So you have a solid foundation. We use thirty five hundred PVC eyes, uh, PSI concrete. Okay? So we done that. And then, uh, once we do that, we take and cut our six by six footers out four inches by twelve. Because we've got a two by twelve double beam going all the way across twenty feet. Cause addition is twenty feet across and sixteen feet out. So we got, uh, six, six by six footers on the addition with, uh, two, two by twelve double beams, two foot off the existing house. And we got one that's out towards the front that's on the end of addition, uh, with, uh, two by twelve double beams. We taking both the two by twelve double beams to the six by six footers with two seven and a half inch hex bolts with washers and nuts. So, uh, the code is now they used to use leg bolts, but when you tighten the screws, they wind up pulling through the wood. So now they make you use hex bolts with washers. So everything is bolted down. Okay? Now we want to know, um, we putting our ledger board on the existing house. The ledger board is, uh, two by ten ledger board and we bolt the ledger board back to the existing house, not nailed with hex screws with washers. That's three and a half inch hex screws. So it's not nailed back to the house, but bolted. Now we running our floor joists. The drawings call for two by ten floor joists, sixteen on center. Okay, we run our floor joints, sixteen on center. Okay, now we putting liquid nail on our floor joints. And then we take and put our three quarter inch plywood down tongue and groove. Okay, we screw it down to the floor joints. Now we running our galvanized, we installing our galvanized, uh, uh, joist hangers with galvanized nails. And we installing our hurricane clips. We installed a hurricane clips to the floor joists and the double beams. So which means you can park a tractor trailer up on top of that foundation and it's not going anywhere. Okay, the same thing we do with the deck, the same situation. Okay? So we did the deck too, did the foundation for the deck. Okay, now we frame. The code in the state of Maryland, most contractors don't understand is that we frame with two by six, uh, by Easter sixteen on center. We go all the way around, we frame it. uh by eight studs, sixteen on center, we go all the way around, we framing our our right wall. Okay, then we inserting our window with a two by eight double header. Okay, we doing our front wall with one window with two by eight double header, and we got our door with a two by eight double header. And on the left wall, where the uh the bathroom is going, we we don't have any windows on that side, so it's all two by six uh by eight sixteen on center wall. Okay, once we do that, then we take metal strips and we crisscross them. That's called wind bracing. So wherever there's a solid wall, we got a window. So that solid wall on each side of the window, we take our wind bracing and crisscross it, and then we put our plywood over top of it. It'll make the wall feel like it's concrete. So that's called wind bracing. So what it does is it'll allow the wall to withstand winds of the tornado speeds, hurricane speeds, a hundred and sixty mile an hour winds. Because we getting more wind speeds now in the state of Maryland, in this area, okay? So once that's.
Mister Mister Watson, can, for the essence of time, um I'm I understanding, if this is correct, that you are doing the ADA ramp. There's gonna be um.
No, 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 there's no ADA ramp, there's a lift.
It's a lift?
On the lift, yeah.
Okay. All right, so there's a lift and, okay, so right now you got in all your permits completed. So once this meeting goes on, the next step is like, you know, if everything works out fine, by tomorrow, our code enforcement should be able to give you the permit. But before that, I want to make sure, because we're running out of time, so I want to make sure that if we uh we um get you, is there something else particular that we need to know? So it's a lift that's gonna be put?
No, it's a bathroom. I'm doing an ADA compliant bathroom with a rolling shower. A four by four shower, yeah, and a bedroom.
So those be the two items that you are gonna be putting on, or is there anything else?
It's a deck two, twelve by six, yeah, sixteen by thirteen deck with a staircase, yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much, and thank you for uh sharing your whole know- the the knowledge that you did with us, because definitely it's very interesting information. It's definitely speaking Mister Kamali's language over there, and I know Alma, because you know Mister Kamali has done a lot of that work. So we appreciate that knowledge. Um, I will give, I will give the next step up to um Luke Chesek to give us uh the Brian Neller's bill. Um, and and Luke, you're gonna have to write this down, you know, because it's been going from war two to war one, it might end up being in war two back again, so. You know, so there you go. Go ahead, Luke, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Selena. Um, just don't talk, uh, don't talk, don't do work um before eight o'clock in the morning. Don't do work um after eight o'clock at night. Um, and make sure that, you know, we have ordinances about our our trees. Um, we have an urban forest codes, I'm sure, almost told you all about that. Um, also be mindful of as you as you dig, um where that dirt goes, that it doesn't go into neighbors' properties, or that it doesn't create um sort of a a hill that can be um water can run off on into a neighbor's properties or onto sidewalks. Um, or else we get angry calls from folks. Um, so then keep that all in mind, and um talk to Alma about any other requirements, and you should be good. Thank you.
You're muted, Mister Watson.
Ma'am.
No, I thought you were saying something or telling you that you were muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank y'all so much, and I wish I could give you the entire presentation, but it's okay. And I really appreciate it, but if y'all guys want to come by and look at the addition, I do all my work to code, and I never had an inspection fail, okay?
Yeah, so Alma did share the plans and the information with us, so we do have it. You know, so usually we like the questions we wanted to know. One, um usually more or less like if Alma clears it, the requirement for us, for you to come to Mayor Council mainly has been because that way the residents get to hear the work that you're doing and the fact that you have clear at the Prince George's County and the city. So that would at least know that um you are doing the work legally, so that if they have questions, it does it does help them to know that who is the face behind the work that's being done, and that's that's great work, because that way they know that if you do lovely work, right, they they definitely know who it is. Um, so let me get to the council members quickly, because I'm running out of time. And I'm actually gonna ask Council, can you go ahead and put another six minutes on the clock, so at least could get to you guys?
So am I finished now, or it's it's good?
Give me, give me one minute, let me just add more time to the clock, because right now, and I just want to make sure I give the council a fair time to ask questions if they choose to. Can I have a motion for six minutes on the clock?
Motion for six minutes.
Second.
Second.
Yes, we probably moved in second. Any discussion? Objection, abstention here. Now we have a six more minutes on the clock. So I just wanted to be respectful to like give them some time. All right, um Jared Valerie, so this is like on thirtieth street, I'm gonna go with you guys first. Uh Valerie, you could go first, followed by Jared.
Um, no. Any questions? Thank you for presenting, um and uh thank you for investing in Mount Rainier. Thank you.
Okay, Jared.
Likewise, thanks for coming tonight, and appreciate your investment in our community.
Perfect, Danielle.
Thank you, and yeah, um thank you for coming and presenting this, and I can't wait to go by Mister and Mrs. Battles and uh see it once it's done.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Luke, anything else to add, because I know I gave you the spill, but I wasn't sure if you had any additional questions? All right, perfect. Thank you, Mister Kamali. We're good? Okay, Alma, I'm sending back to you, so are we all good to give clearance um from cold tomorrow, I'm assuming?
We are all clear with um the permits and Mister Watson. Uh, we will be waiting for you tomorrow morning with the permit already.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hey, y'all guys, have a blessed night.
Thank you so much for being here. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or get some breath, because you sound like you got a lot of exciting work to do, so thank you for investing.
I have W S S C plumbing inspection in the mornings. I have to get up early around six o'clock to be there around six thirty. Okay, because I got inspection tomorrow morning over there.
All right, per- perfect. Thank you so much, okay?
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
You have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, let me see, uh moving on to item number six, this is gonna go very fast, guys. Uh, this discussion on teacher appreciation week, uh five hundred dollars for each Mount Rainier Elementary School and Thomas S. Stone Elementary School, totaling a thousand dollars. Um, this is not gonna take five minutes. Every year in the budget, we allocate five hundred dollars for each of the schools in order for them to um put it into beautiful pot that they, you know, for the many things that they do for teacher appreciation um week. So Mount Rainier, before that, um we used to, it was interesting. I did request that for this to be in the budget a couple of budget cycles ago, and from there on, it has gone in our budget. Marion Council has approved the funding. This is more to notify the residents that the money will be um given to the schools. And um we look forward to celebrating our wonderful uh teachers here in Mount Rainier and Thomas Stone. And um yay, happy, happy thoughts for them, right? We really appreciate them. Um, that's mainly the the report slash discussion of this one, okay? Good? Yes, all right. Moving on to item number seven. Public comment. Can you scroll down, Meli, please? Thank you. Oh, that was a fast scroll down. All right. The rules for public comment, the mayor and city council invite and welcome comments at a public meeting. The mayor presiding officer will recognize you. Please introduce yourself first, last name, for recording purposes. And give the name of your street and block number, I G forty-three hundred block of thirty-fourth street. Please indicate whether, please indicate in the chat whether you would like the mayor to read your comment or you will speak on your comment. It's one or the other, okay? Uh, public comment has a time limit of three minutes per speaker, other unless otherwise agree upon by the mayor. While speaking, please maintain a courteous tone and avoid personal attacks. If you wish to lodge a complaint about the performance or conduct of a city employee, bring it to, bring the concerns to the attention of the city manager, who will look into the matter to respond to you. As a courtesy to all the residents and business, the council requests that speakers uh not use a specific address or names of individual when describing a situation or making a complaint, noting the block is preferred over the specific address. So um if you're making a full comment, we please ask you to abide by the rules. It makes my job easier, because therefore I do not have to interfere if you are attacking an elected official, other staff member, or a resident. So, perfect, okay, do I have um? So um I have a comment, please put your name, last name, street, and block number. If you want me to read it, just uh put read on the chat, okay? Um, is there anything on Facebook, Jared with a D? Okay. Mike, can you put your information on on the on the chat, or you could read your own comment? It's fine either way. Okay, I'll read the comment. It says, when are we going to have a meeting the citizens can attend? Um, our Zoom meetings are all open to the public. They are virtual, they're also on YouTube and on Facebook. And we actually get more attendance uh via virtual than we had ever, ever in the history of far, at least in the last eight years on it. When it comes to in-person meetings, uh we have stated before, but I'll state again, we are waiting for Pots Hall to be finished, Pots Hall should be wrapping up. One, because our current location is too small to have meetings even for our budget. Um, we don't even have room for the directors to all be there at once, to give you an example, right? They have to come and wait. And if you put all of us there, plus city manager, clerk, and communications, it takes up all the room. Before, we also look into potentially doing it at the schools or the nature center. Part of the problem is that the staff will have to go in two hours ahead to fix the location, get it set for us to be able to get it ready. That means for those two hours, they'll do nothing but deal with the meeting plus the three or whatever hours are, plus two hours to break it down and bring everything to City Hall in the middle. Uh, you know, after the meetings, our meetings sometimes go as, sometimes as far as like ten, eleven o'clock, that means that they'll be getting home past midnight to be here um at nine. And that's if the location will let us use it, but I'll give you as an example, the school cannot have a custodian after a certain time, because they also have to get the school ready for the kids. And for um the nature center, the same thing. That means that they will have to um have staff available to be there, and we can do it. So just give us a few more time for in-person meetings, but the reality is like, it's not doable for us. The community police room is too little as well. And we don't have any other uh building uh the city um where we can have meetings, and the three locations that we could potentially host a meeting in in the city are 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 not able to host us if we have to um have meeting of the staff that late. So uh when Pots Hall uh opens, we are gonna work on having a in-person and virtual meetings, a little bit of both, but that's been um the the only issue we have. And if not, we can only enter one one resident at a time. And I'll tell you this, how do how do we decide what one resident is to be able to get into the little Perry Street uh room? Um, it's not, it's not equipped to do that. Uh, the building looks big, but the conference space area is is very, very little. Okay, so uh just bear with us a little longer as we um as we get into our new building in order to go back into um face-to-face meetings, okay? Thank you so much. So I see uh Joseph, uh twenty-ninth street.
Hello, uh Mayor and Council, thank you for letting me address you this evening. Um, I just wanted to say how much I appreciated all the work y'all have done over the past uh uh many years. Uh uh Councilmember Chesek, it's sad to see you step down, but you've served the community greatly in your two terms. Um, and Councilmember, Councilmember Stoltzfest. Um, I also want to say how great it's been to you being a leader in war two, and I'm really gonna miss seeing you on the council. Um, I guess this, you know, this will be my last meeting as a resident, but I really wanted to just say I appreciate all you all have done for the council as well as uh Mayor Benitez, uh Councilmember Carter, and Councilmember Woodall. Um, so uh that's it. Um, just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph, and thank you for being here. So you heard how to call it the Brian Neller's bill. It went from war two to war one, so it might end up being in war two, so you might want to take a note of uh the last speech Luke gave and and write it down. If not, we're gonna have to like um tag Luke in every time we have a presentation for him to just like read it. Look, my we we might end up doing that, Luke, just summons you in.
I'll try to grab it, Mayor Benitez.
Perfect, thank you so much. I'm pretty sure you guys will do an excellent job, and and thank you for the kind words, so words, myself and the rest of the council. All right, um anything else on Facebook? Perfect, thank, well, not perfect, but there's nothing much we could do about it. But I do have, let me see, one, two, three, I think it's like four residents on the call, on the Zoom call, and I know um other people do watch us on YouTube and on Facebook Live. It just makes it a little bit easier for them to do it that way. All right, so seeing that there's no comments on um both um any more comments on Facebook or on the Zoom call? I am closing um public comment. All right, thank you, thank you for the comments. Old Business, um and before I do that, just remember like, so I made this section today, but I try not to, because then uh people feel that I have favorites, right? So pu- please put your name and last name and block number in order to make sure we read your comment, if not, it's just gonna be in the chat. All right, moving on to the next item, Old Business, second reading adoption resolution number oh one dash twenty twenty-five, establishment of the Mount Rainier Community Garden Committee. The Marion Council will have a second reading and adoption of resolution oh one twenty twenty-five, establishment of Mount Rainier Community Garden Committee. This is Valerie's item and is up for vote tonight. Um, can you put the resolution up front? Thank you so much. It has been read. And on April first was the first reading, so this will be the the vote reading. So Valerie, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. So this is the City of Mount Rainier Resolution um number one oh zero one twenty twenty-five, introduced by Vice Mayor Valerie Woodall, establishment of the Mount Rainier Community Garden Committee. Right, whereas section four oh two, number six of the city code states that the mayor and council have the authority to create committees and appoint citizens to those committees. And whereas section four oh two, number thirty-six of the city code states that the mayor and council have the authority to establish and maintain gardens. And whereas the Mount Rainier Community Garden was initially established in twenty thirteen on thirty-first street between Wyndham Road and Arundel Road, but the Mount Rainier Community Garden Committee was not formally established. And whereas the mayor and council recognized the need to maintain and support the Mount Rainier Community Garden to improve the quality of life for Mount Rainier residents. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, uh I'm sorry, that the Mount Rainier Community Garden is established and official as an official um committee of the City of Mount Rainier. And now therefore be it further resolved that each fiscal year, the city manager's proposed budget shall include funding for the committee to maintain, promote, and develop the garden. The city uh this committee uh shall be composed of five members who are appointed for two years' terms uh by the mayor and council and serve at their pleasure. Should the committee fall below mem- full membership, the city manager shall immediately recruit applicants to fill the vacancy and recommend appointees to the mayor and council. The provisions of this resolution shall supersede any rules, procedures, and resolutions previously approved by the mayor and council of Mount Rainier. Um, this resolution is adopted by the mayor and council of City of Mount Rainier on the sixth day of May twenty twenty-five.
Thank you so much, uh Valerie, for putting this together um and making sure you follow through. So Valerie did a check through, we couldn't find one, so they make, we make sure that it's in writing, this goes in line with making sure that we have um documents that are our teams, um and I know our city team like loves to make sure we have documents to back up the information. So that if they're ever asked for any audit, there's documents that uh support the creation of the committees. But also as the auditing like funds, um they know that it's been for um committees that been approved by mayor and council, right? So uh thank you for taking the leadership in that, Valerie, I definitely appreciate you, your eye to detail on that. It's it's um, it's a big asset we have in in you doing that. All right, so you have heard this beautiful um resolution oh one dash twenty twenty-five, the establishment of the Mount Rainier Community Garden Committee. Um, we are gonna vote on it, I'm gonna ask for a vote, I'm gonna open up for discussion. If you have something to say, that'll be the time to say it, to make it a little bit faster, but, okay. So uh can I have a motion of floor to approve resolution oh one twenty twenty-five establishing the Mount Rainier Community Garden Committee?
Seven.
Second.
Yes, we're probably moving second. I'm gonna open up for discussion. Do you guys have any comments? If you do, I'll open the floor. Hold on, I will open up the floor in order to make sure you guys on it. So Valerie, I'm gonna go around asking them, and then I'll come back to you, okay? Would that work? Valerie, I already gave you all my comments. Um, okay, Jared, we're good? Luke? Danielle?
I'm good.
Wait, you shook your head no, or and you said you're good?
I'm good, no, I'm good.
Okay, uh, I'm good, Valerie, do you have anything else to add, or you're good?
Well, just thank you, everyone. You will help solidify and professionalize the committee, it's the word, so thank you.
Thank you so much. So now I'm gonna call do, I'm gonna call for the vote. Just want to make sure I give you guys, um usually we do it before, but I figured this one wouldn't be a fast one, we already read and know what this is about. All right, so um there's the motion, floor is in discussion. Any objections? Abstentions? Hearing none. The resolution oh one dash twenty twenty-five establishing the Community Garden Committee has passed unanimously five zero zero. has passed unanimously 5-0-0. Okay? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Valerie. All right, moving on to the new business. Thank you, Meli. Uh, Number 9, Re, uh, First Reading of Ordinance 03-2025, Budget Amendment Number 2. The Mayor Council will have the First Reading of Ordinance 03-2025, Budget Amendment, uh, Number 2. Can you put it on the screen, please? Meli? Oh, there you go. All right, apologize, Melissa. There's like a slight delay and I, I'm not, I'm trying to catch it. Okay, so. Oh, how lovely it is. So I do have Mr. Kamali here. Mr. Kamali, I'm gonna see the floor and no Ron Wilson is here, so they could help us with the read-through. Mr. Kamali, anything you wanna add to this?
Oh, Mayor, thank you. I just, uh, have Ron to go through the numbers and, uh, if you allow Ron to do that, we appreciate that. That's the first reading of the budget, uh, Budget Amendment. And hopefully we get this one passed by next month and that's it.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali. So, um, Valerie, could you do me a favor? Can you read just the, for, the first part until this, um, until it says budget to City of Mount Rainier and then we'll give it to Ron. So Ron, give you enough time to drink some water by the time, uh, Valerie reads the first paragraph. Okay? Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland, Ordinance Number 03-2025, uh, Budget Amendment Number 2, Authorizing a Movement of Grant Funds in the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Between Line Items. Whereas, um, the City of Mount Rainier Budget for Fiscal Year 2025 was adopted by Ordinance Number 03-2024 in April 2024. And whereas it, it has been deemed necessary to transfer funds between line items to meet current demands for goods and service and now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland, that the following transfer of funds between appropriations shall be made to the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget of the City of Mount Rainier.
Okay, first section is, uh, Revenue, uh, Not Including the Grants. Um, Item 4707, Use of Fund Balance. We are increasing from 1 million, uh, to 2.5 million. That's an increase of 1 and 1/2 million. Um, in answer to, uh, previous question, uh, by the council, um, after we do the use of fund balance for Pots Hall, our fund balance will be $5.8 million. Uh, keep in mind that fund balance is the difference between all assets and all liabilities. So it doesn't mean that we've got $5.8 million of cash sitting aside. Okay? Um, next section, Expenses, Not Including Grants. Uh, Item 5701, Pots Hall Welcome Center. Uh, we are, uh, we originally budgeted 1 million. We're increasing by 1 and 1/2 million to a revised budget of 2 and 1/2 million. Item, um, 5600 PD, uh, Building Maintenance and Repairs. We are increasing the budget from 10,700 to 64,300 to a resulting budget number of 75,000. This is to, uh, pay for the, uh, roof repairs, uh, on the police building. And we're paying for that by moving monies from other, uh, accounts, uh, into this one for the PD. So, uh, the first item that we're moving from is, uh, 5600 CH, that's City Hall, the Building Maintenance and Repairs. Where, uh, we started at 18,000, we're reducing by 15,000 to a remaining budget of 3,000. The next item, uh, 5600 PW, that's Public Works, uh, Building Maintenance and Repairs. We started with 22,000 in the budget. We're reducing by 10,000 to a remaining budget of $12,000. Item 5107 PD, Retirement Planning Contribution. Originally budgeted for 207, 284, we're reducing by 31,500, uh, a resulting budget of 175,784. We're making these, the, these adjustments because the actual pension expense that we paid for in December was slightly under what we budgeted for. So we, we, we had some little extra money there. Uh, the next line is 5107 CH, that's City Hall, the Retirement Plan Contribution. Uh, originally budgeted for 32,570, we're reducing by 2,800 uh, to a resulting budget of 29,770. The last item in this section, 5107 ADM, that's, uh, Administration, the Retirement Plan Contribution, was originally 39,058. We're reducing by 5,000 to a resulting budget of 34,058. Uh, the next section is, uh, Adding Grants or, or Changing Grants Within Our Budget. Uh, and the first section of this is the Revenue. So Item 4698 ARPA, we originally budgeted for 1,418,000. We're adding 330,000 to a revised budget of 1,748. This is, uh, largely because, um, items that we originally planned to spend in Fiscal '24 did not get done at that time, so they were taken up in Fiscal '25. Plus the initiatives we already planned to spend for Fiscal '25, so we, we need to up '25's budget. Item 4700.45, this is, um, Richardson Park from the MDNR. Uh, was not budgeted for in the spring. Uh, we're adding 105,726, uh, and that's the resulting, uh, revised budget number. Uh, Item 4700.46, this is the State of Maryland Capital Grant for Pots Hall. Originally was not budgeted for. We are adding 750,000 to a resulting budget number of 750,000. The next item is 4700.49. This is from Prince George's County for Richardson Park. Originally had a budget of zero. We're adding 100,000 for a resulting budget of 100,000. Item 4700.40, DHCD, this is for the 34th Street Facade Phase 2, was originally zero. We're adding 150,000 dollars and the resulting budget is 150. Item 4700.43, Project Restore 2.0. Uh, originally was budgeted for zero. We're adding 288,800 and the resulting budget is 288,800. Item 4700.51, this is the solar, solar panels for city buildings from the MEA. Originally was budgeted for zero. Uh, we're adding 422,000 and the resulting budget is 40, 422,000. Item 4700.47, DHCD for the mural. Originally was zero. We're adding 10,000. The resulting budget is 10,000. Item 01, 4700.21, State of Maryland Capital Grant for the Police Basement. Originally was zero. We're adding 300,000 for a resulting budget of 300,000. Item 4700.42, this is the Police Accountability, uh, Grant for 2025. Originally was zero. We're adding 34,411 and the resulting budget is 34,411. Item 4700.44, this is the Police Department Community Grant. Originally was zero. We're adding 14,000 and the resulting budget is 14,000. Item 4700.39, this is the Pet Waste Grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust. Originally was zero. We're adding 7,000 and the resulting budget is 7,000. So those are all of the revenue items for grants. The next section is the offsetting expenses for those grants. First item, um, 5710 CH, that's City Hall. This is, um, uh, the Richardson Park allocation for ARPA. Originally was zero. We're adding 50,000. The resulting revised budget will be 50,000. Item 5701, this is Pots Hall ARPA. Originally was 400,000. We're adding 280 for a resulting budget of 680,000. Uh, Item 5710.45, um, Public Works. Uh, Richardson Park, MDNR. Originally was zero. We're adding 105,726. Resulting budget of 105,726. Item 5701.46 CH, City Hall. State of Maryland Capital Grant for Pots Hall. Originally was zero. We're adding 750,000 for a resulting budget of 750,000. Item 5710.49, Public Works. This is the Richardson Park PG County Grant. Was originally zero. We're adding 1,000, uh, I'm sorry, we're adding 100,000 and the resulting budget will be 100,000. Item 5700.40, Economic Development. Uh, the DHCD, uh, 34th Street Facade Phase 2 Grant. Originally was zero. We're adding 150, uh, 150,000 and the resulting budget is 150,000. Item 5700.43, Economic Development. Project Restore 2.0. Originally was zero. We're adding 288,800 and the resulting budget is 288,800. Item 5700.51, City Hall. This is the MEA Solar Panel Grant for City Buildings. Originally was zero. We're adding 422,000. The resulting budget is 422,000. Item 5899.47, Economic Development. This is the DHCD mural. Was originally zero. We're adding 10,000 and the resulting budget is 10,000. Item 5708.21, Police Department. The State of Maryland Capital Grant for the Police Basement. Was originally zero. We're adding 300,000. Resulting budget is 300,000. Item 5899.42, the past grant for 2025. Originally was zero. We're adding 34,411 and the resulting budget is 34,411. Item 5899.44, Police Department. This is the Community Grant. Um, was originally zero. We're adding 14,000. The resulting budget is 14,000. Item 5899.39, Public Works. The CBT Pet Waste Grant was originally zero. We're adding 7,000. The resulting budget is 7,000.
Okay, thank you so much, Ron and everybody. You see, it's like three minutes left on the clock. Um, this is the fir, first reading. So there is no voting tonight for this. It's just for our knowledge and this is something that was also brought up in the work session. So this is not the first time we've seen this document. And to wrap that up is basically, um, basically mirror, mirror images of what the grant is and some grants that we went ahead and moved. The reason why is zeros because we don't count our eggs and chickens until they're in our hands, right? So we need those grants to apply. Once we receive them, uh, we do the budget amendment. This is what is done at the end, uh, to make sure we reconcile between money coming in for the grants and money that's gonna be a spend or has been spending on grants. Are we good, um, with the first reading? Thumbs up? I said Valerie, you're good. Jerry, you're good. Luke, uh, Danielle, we're all good. Mr. Kamali, obviously you're good. You created this document. Uh, Ron, good? All right, any questions from our residents? Name, last name, a block and street number? Anything on Facebook, Jared? With a D? Okay. And I don't see anything on the chat neither. All right. So again, this is just the first reading, no votes. Uh, we are gonna be voting in 14 days per, um, the ruling. If not, we'll have moved it to Monday, but we need 14 days unless you guys choose to suspend the rules. But 14 days should be fine. Okay? So in saying that, um, since we have no questions, everybody's good. We're moving on to the next item. Uh, Ron Wilson, thank you so much. Uh, Natalie as well. Um, anybody in your team who worked on this beautiful document, Mr. Kamali. Uh, thank you for putting this together and, and making sure that, um, making sure that at all times, uh, we have the information, um, we need. All right, so moving on to item number, oof, where are we at? Number 10, First Reading of Resolution, uh, 2-2025, Proclaiming April as Arab-American Heritage Month. Mayor and Council will have the First Reading of the Resolution 02-2025, Proclaiming April as Arab-American Month. Um, like I said to you guys in the last meeting, um, I am gonna be switching my proclamations into resolutions. So the proclamation was already written. I'm gonna be doing that with all the doc, all my other proclamations as well. So for the next, uh, meeting, you'll probably see like two or three of them until I get them done. Um, thank you, uh, Meli, Mr. Kamali as well for making sure, uh, you work through the process. Um, and can you put it in front? The other thing to point out, uh, for April, we did have a proclamation. We did read it in the meeting and we also had, uh, so I know I posted social media as well. And so that way, all that great thing was done. Now we just need to do additional paperwork, uh, that goes along with that resolutions and that. Those take a little bit longer than that. But in doing that, other proclamations, I could proclaim that a little bit faster and I did. So you'll see a lot of that. Uh, so if you're curious on why is it that we're having a resolution for a different month on, let's say, May as an example, it's just a read-through, nothing else. Oof, um, so can I have, uh, six minutes on the clock, please? Valerie?
Sub moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion, objection, abstention? Hearing? None. So in doing that, um, here's the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland Resolution 02-2025. It's introduced by me, uh, Mayor Benitez. Uh, Resolution of the Mayor and Council of Mount Rainier, Maryland, Proclaiming April as Arab-American Heritage Month. All right, Valerie, you do this beautifully. Go ahead.
Well, the City of Mount Rainier, we want to honor the history, culture, heritage, and contributions of Arab-Americans in our community throughout Maryland and our nation. And whereas the month of April is nationally recognized and celebrated as Arab-American Heritage Month since 2020, I'm sorry, since 2017. Whereas this year's theme is honoring the past and inspiring the future, reflects the, and celebrates the Arab-American community's historical legacy, recognizing the past generation, I'm sorry, recognizing the present generation and inspiring, I may need to make this bigger. Hold on one second. Um, recognizing the present generation and inspiring the next generation of leaders. And whereas for over a century, the Arab-American community has been making valuable contributions to virtual, virtually every aspect and key roles in the advancement and the fields, in multiple fields of study, including and not limited to arts, culture, science, math, politics, history, business, music, sports, medicine, economic development, education, agriculture, literature, dance, high technology, military service, and education. And whereas the history of American, Arab-Americans in the United States at times remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate, which must be combated in the forms of education and awareness. And whereas the Arab community, uh, brought with them to the United States, their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education and diversity, and faith and creed, uh, that have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas the Arab community and their descendants since migrating to the United States have shared, um, their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens. And whereas the City of Mount Rainier will continue to work toward becoming an inclusive city where, in which all the community, all the community, past, present, or future are respected and that the Arab-American community is recognized for their contributions to our city, country, and the world. And now therefore be resolved that the Mayor and Council of, um, Mount Rainier recognizes the, and acknowledges the contributions, achievements, and influences of the Arab-American community and resolved that the Mayor and City Council of Mount Rainier proclaims April as Arab-American Heritage Month.
Hi, I'm sorry, my mic was muted. Okay, so thank you, Valerie, for reading the whole, uh, document. So this is the first reading and we are gonna put it on the next meeting for the second vote and, um, and... So this is the first reading and we are gonna put it on the next meeting for the second vote and um in in adoption. Alright, so I only have a few of them that I need to do for proclamation to resolution, so I ask you guys to spare um spare and bear with me as we go through all of them, okay? Um, but I'll try not to do too many in one day, in one meeting, I think I have like three to go. Um, okay, perfect, thank you guys so much for that. Alright, so vote, uh what's it called, number eleven, vote on approval of minutes? The mayor council vote on approving the following minutes, March eighteen twenty twenty five work session, March twenty second twenty twenty five public hearing and work session for proposed FY twenty twenty six budget. April first twenty twenty five legislative meeting and budget legislative meeting for proposed FY twenty twenty six budget. April eight twenty twenty five public hearing and work session for FY twenty twenty six budget. Can I have a motion on the floor to approve um all the minutes that were uh submitted?
So moved.
Probably moved, probably moved in second, any discussion? Objection, abstention, hearing none? The minutes uh for our marketing, March thirty second, April first and April eighth, all of them have been approved. And thank you Meli for all the work you do, as I stated before prior, we didn't have minutes for a long time, so we had to backtrack and do more, more than three years worth of minutes. Um, so that was a lot of listening of videos and, you know, and making sure we were on time, now we're like on time with our minutes. And we definitely appreciate you a lot for keeping us on track. Number uh twelve, presentation of minutes, the city clerk will present um April fifteen twenty twenty five minutes for the work session and budget legislative meeting for proposed FY twenty twenty six budget to the mayor and council. So you guys will have your um minutes on the package. Please, please, please feel free to um review them and um if there's any feedback, um give the feedback back, okay? And number thirteen, uh motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Alright, so we're gonna give it to um Luke and Jared, is that okay Valerie? Okay, thank you Valerie, alright, so that will you guys end this meeting, alright, any objection? Abstentions, hearing a none. Um, this meeting has come to an end and please join us on Monday, uh six thirty for pre-meeting, seven o'clock for touring in of the mayor and council and uh we look forward to seeing you there and thank you staff for being as wonderful as you are. You guys have been there since before nine o'clock tonight and it's night, it's eight thirty now and you guys are barely going home. So thank you guys and have a good night, so bye council and uh please extend the thanks, uh Mr. Kamali to the rest of staff for being uh so helpful to us. Alright, bye Meli, I know you still have like election work to do. Alright, you guys have a good night.
Alright, thank you staff.
Bye bye everyone, thank you for residents to show up as well, alright, bye.